Good evening, and sorry for our tardiness. The East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session for Thursday, June 21st, 2018. I just want to remind everybody that a recording device will be used during this meeting. And I'm going to hand it over to, I'm sorry, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I'm going to hand it over to Kristin Camp, the township solicitor.
(inaudible) Okay, the first matter is a public hearing on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Anytime there's a zoning ordinance amendment, there's various procedural requirements that the township has to adhere to based on the state law, which is known as the municipality's planning code. This ordinance is to create, to add definitions for age-qualified residential community. It will amend, that's, definitions are in chapter 300 of the East Brandywine Code. It will also make changes to chapter 399, which is the Township zoning ordinance, in order to create an age-qualified residential overlay zoning district to permit an age-qualified residential community by conditional use. In that overlay district, to establish area and bulk requirements and design standards for that type of use, again, the age-qualified residential community. So, the board exhibits that I'd like to mark-
I'm sorry, real quick, Kristin, can we just go off the record for the purpose of the public hearing for the ordinance? Do you want to go off the record for this, or do you want to-
Well, this is the public hearing part of it.
Should we go off the record for this?
No, this is, I mean, the hearing, this part of the meeting will be considered the public hearing-
Okay, alright, so I just want to make sure-
So, the, we did advertise it as a hearing, but part of your public meeting. So, the first thing we did in the daily local news on June 6th and June 13th, we did the appropriate public notice, we did a summary of the ordinance provisions. That would be the first exhibit that I would mark, Board One. Second exhibit is the property that's proposed to be rezoned into this overlay district was posted on June 4th, and that is also a requirement of the state law. That affidavit of posting was signed by your roadmaster, Matthew Van Lou, and I have that affidavit, as well as there were photographs taken of the postings. The third exhibit is correspondence that the township manager sent to the Chester County Planning Commission on April 19th, 2018. Every zoning ordinance must be reviewed by the Chester County Planning Commission at least 30 days prior to the public hearing. So, that letter evidences that that was sent 30 days prior, obviously, to today. The fourth exhibit is the Chester County Planning Commission then reviews the ordinance and writes a letter back to the township giving suggestions on whether or not they think the ordinance is appropriate based on the county's landscapes plan, which is the county plan, county comprehensive plan. They also give suggestions on whether they think edits are appropriate. The county had positive things to say about the ordinance and didn't suggest necessarily any amendments be made. The fifth exhibit, because, again, the property proposes to rezone certain property into another overlay district, each property owner who owns property that is proposed to be rezoned had to receive notice of tonight's hearing 30 days prior to tonight. So, B5 is a list of all the property owners whose property is proposed to be rezoned, and it's the correspondence that my office sent to them on May 18th, 2018. So, that's the fifth exhibit. The sixth exhibit is, because I only did a summary advertisement of the ordinance, I did not advertise the entire ordinance because that would be extremely expensive, I sent a copy of the ordinance to the Chester County Law Library on June 6th, so that would be my sixth exhibit. The seventh is that I also sent a copy to the daily local news for public inspection. And then the eighth is your own planning commission and your task force committee spent a lot of time going over this ordinance. I wasn't here when the ordinance started, but the way I understand it is the applicant's council drafted the ordinance, worked with your land planner, David Sweet, and then obviously worked with your task force committee and your planning commission. So, at the meeting, your planning commission meeting on April 4th, although this ordinance was discussed several times, at the April 4th, 2018 meeting, the planning commission made a recommendation that the ordinance move forward and come to the board before a public hearing. I'm going to turn it over to Lindsey Dunn, who is applicant's counsel. She can explain briefly the purpose of the ordinance and, you know, what proposed development will go forward if this ordinance is ultimately enacted.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Ms. Camp, I can put a version of the, is it possible to use this to put a version of the, just so everyone can see it?
Hold on, Lindsey. It's slow tonight.
It's okay. Just build the suspense.
Grief. It is really slow. You're going to have to bring it down. Just hold on there.
What is it? A laser?
Do you have a full size?
We'll get there.
Sure. It'll be better for people. And I also brought copies of the concept plan, the proposed ordinance, and the county planning commission's review for members of the board-
Yeah, I have all the exhibits that they don't have them.
So, as Ms. Camp already summarized, we proposed and petitioned to amend the zoning ordinance around a year ago, and in the course of the ensuing year, have worked diligently with the township's zoning task force and devised the ordinance as it is today, and as it's been approved by the township's planning commission and the county's planning commission. What's proposed is an age-qualified residential community to be on this tract of land known as the Weaver Tract. This is the concept plan here. The ordinance as drafted largely mimics an already existing portion of the township's zoning ordinance, specifically the design and dimensional standards for the IR Institutional Residential District. So, nothing entirely new in terms of design standards that the township hasn't seen before. And we've taken a lot of measures to make sure that we preserve natural features of the property and sensitive environmental features of the property in the development of this property. The reason why, as many of you know, that this proposed ordinance was so attractive to the school district with whom we're under agreement of sale is because it will be adding residential, a residential community to the township, which this property would be used for residential uses in any event. In this case, because it's an age-qualified residential community, will be adding residential units that will not add to, add any burden to the school district, and it will increase the tax base.
So, Ms. Dunn, the definition of the use that's permitted requires that the residential dwellings be occupied with residents over 55?
That's correct.
Just in with the Fair Housing Act.
That's correct.
And so, if this is approved, ultimately, there would be a homeowner's declaration that would be recorded against the property that would restrict the occupancy of those dwelling units to people over age 55?
That's correct.
Okay.
And while you had already summarized, you know, the number of organizations and committees that we've met with in order to craft this ordinance, I just wanted to let the township know that we also, we were proactive and took it upon ourselves to organize a neighbor meeting with all of the properties that are being rezoned. That took place on May 30th, and we felt very positive about the interactions at that meeting.
Yeah, and just so the board and the public understands, this is only the first step. So, the ordinance as it is drafted today and as enacted today would not allow this proposed development in terms of the density and the configuration on this property. So, the ordinance has to be adopted first. The ordinance would allow this type of development by what's called conditional use. So, if this ordinance is passed, the board supervisors would have to hold a conditional use hearing to ultimately approve a development plan. That would serve as the zoning approval for the use. If the zoning approval is then approved or given approval, the next step is subdivision and land development of the specific development. So, it's sort of a three-step process at the township, the zoning text amendment, a conditional use hearing, and then subdivision and land development plans get approved. That's all at the township level. There's also outside agency permits, working with PennDOT, working with DEP, working with your utility providers. That all has to happen as well during land development. So, this is by, if the board votes to approve this ordinance tonight, that doesn't approve any specific development plan. As Ms. Dunn indicated, this is only a concept plan that they put together so that it would help the planning commission and the task force understand the appropriate area and bulk standards, the appropriate open space requirements, conservation features, that type of thing.
Correct. And in terms of working with outside agencies, I would also note that my client has already been involved in conversations and meetings between township officials and PennDOT and is aware of what is needed in terms of developing this property from a traffic impact perspective. And that PennDOT and the township have asked that the parameters of the traffic impact studies that are undertaken by my client reach past what would traditionally be required for this project, so.
Does the board have any questions specific to the ordinance text?
Was there, I'm not sure what stage this particular draft is in, because I believe that there were some recommendations by Mr. Estey on behalf of the municipal authority-
Right.
-that have not yet been incorporated in this. Is that correct?
Right.
That is correct, yes. Mr. Estey had some suggestions for changes to the proposed ordinance. I noted to Mr. Estey that the changes that he was advising were also terms that were present in the zoning ordinance sections that relate to the Institutional Residential District, among others, in the existing zoning ordinance of the township. So, that if those were changes that the township was interested in seeing in the zoning ordinance, it would make sense to do that at a later date and do it across the zoning ordinance for conformity.
And I also looked at the changes that Mr. Estey suggested. They don't substantively change the ordinance necessarily. I think they fine-tune it and probably make it a better ordinance. We are currently working on a lot of the vision partnership ordinances, the zoning amendments, and we decided, because I know that the applicant had strict time constraints under their agreement of sale with the school district, that they would not be able to meet if we had to send it back to the county planning commission and wait another 30 days. So, in conversations with Ms. Dunn, we agreed that those changes could be adopted when we adopt the other zoning ordinance amendments, which will be probably getting to you in the next month or 60 days. So, those will not be lost, those will be made, and they will, I guess she said, apply to the other sections of your ordinance, not just this overlay district.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, any other questions? And we're happy to answer questions relating to the engineering of the plan or the concept plan, as you wish. I certainly don't want to take up any unnecessary time, but-
The only thing I would, I would say is that I'm active and actively involved with the ordinance task force, which was intimately involved in the development of this, and I just want to say that as opposed to many situations that we find ourselves in where dealing with a developer is very antagonistic, in this particular case, it wasn't like that at all, and I think it was a situation where there was a mutual respect and each side listened to the other side. Some compromises had to be made, as they always are, but it was well-handled.
I agree. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, Kyle, you could open it up if there's any questions from the public on the ordinance. And then what you would do is close the hearing portion and go back to your meeting? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. I actually, as far as the traffic impact studies, can you talk a little about what is entailed with that?
What is anticipated to be undertaken? My client can probably speak more to the breadth of the anticipated study. Study's not been completed because as with fully engineered plans or anything else, that's incredibly financially burdensome, can't be completely undertaken until we had confidence that the rezoning would go through. You want to hear about the breadth?
You had agreed to certain-
Yes.
Yeah, I know that we're going to be looking at the main intersections here.
Pardon the interruption. Can I have you approach the lectern?
Just because now we have the microphones and our awesome stereo system and TV viewers of a million plus, you need to tell them who you are and what you're here for.
I understand. Sebastian Ferrera, I'm with NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes. And in terms of the traffic impact study, we've developed a scope of and incorporated the comments that we received from the township and PennDOT to broaden that scope and look at different scenarios, including, you know, potential future improvements that are, that the township may undertake in the, down the road, and all of the active intersections in and around our property.
So, your subdivision land development ordinance, Jason, would require any development to do a traffic impact study when it's a development of this magnitude? And also because they're going to be impacting a state highway, they're going to have to have a scoping meeting with PennDOT where your township officials and township's traffic engineer will participate in that and really guide in terms of what overall traffic improvements have to be made to handle this proposed development? But that really comes more through, a little bit you'll get into that at conditional use, but really, the nitty-gritty details will come out through subdivision land development?
Okay, are there any public comments or concerns from the audience? Mr. Gross, I apologize, but you're going to have to state your name for the record, please.
And again, pardon my interruption, but if you would come to the lectern so that your audio is picked up?
I have some detailed questions, but I don't know if this is the meeting floor.
Well, you can always ask, and if we can answer them.
So, just again, the hearing is, the hearing is specific to the ordinance text?
Yeah, so I don't know where, I don't know what, to what level-
Okay, well, go ahead, ask them, we'll see.
Okay, so you can stop me at any point, okay? All right. The first, the first one I'd like to ask about is, on the Apple Cross, I live in the Apple Cross Development, and there's a sewage plant there. I don't know how that works, whatever. Will they have their own plant, or they'd be using it?
The Apple Cross has four sectors?
Three.
Three. And I believe right now, one-
Two.
One is being fully used, though, right?
Yeah, two built.
Two built, one's being fully used. So, so there's plenty of room at Apple Cross. In fact, I think we need-
It'd be more cost effective.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, yeah, the-
If your question is-
Can they accommodate?
I think the answer to your question is, the Apple Cross facility was designed and built to accommodate this, as well as some other development within the community.
Okay, so there was some foresight on that, then, okay?
Yeah, certainly was.
Now, I'm not going to go into and complain about costs. First of all, I think it's a wonderful idea, the scene of the community. I welcome, you know, new neighbors and new friends. I think it's great.
Maybe in 20 years, you'll end up there. How about that?
Maybe, maybe, maybe. But no, I think it's, I think it's a great concept, but I have-
But just so you know, the way that this will work, would work, is that the affluent would be treated at the Apple Cross plant, but then would return to this site for disposal.
Return for this?
For irrigation, it's clean to-
Yeah, yeah, the water, the water's cleansed, it's, I think, used for the golf courses right now.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the rates there are pretty steep. I'm from New Jersey, I paid $105 a quarter, right? I'm in a townhouse that's small, paying $197. With a greater number of users, is the cost going to be shared, so we might potentially see a lower cost?
That's through the Water Authority.
Municipal Authority.
I'm sorry, Municipal Authority. I think they would ultimately, you know, that would be a better suited question for them. They're an independent.
Okay. And now, our roads, our HOA pays for snow removal. What would be the situation over there? Because I would hate, I hate to see an incremental cost in my taxes to accommodate snow removal for that community when I'm paying it myself through my HOA.
So, the Apple Cross community was, was something that was done through the builder where the roads were narrower and couldn't accommodate, and so the builder had, had worked this HOA program up so that the HOA was responsible for maintaining their own roads because there was cobblestone around the roads, township-
I think the answer to the question is that what is being proposed for this development are private roads like the roads in Apple Cross.
So, it'd be comparable, then, cobblestones?
No, it's not that, but it's private, which means that there, that those residents will take care of snow removal.
Okay, okay. See, that, to me, that's fair, you know? It's a good thing, that kind of balances out. And then along that road, I'm familiar with all the roads yet, I guess that's Bowlinger there, right?
This particular one is Reeseville and Bowlinger and 322 on this-
And I'm retired, so I have a lot of time during the day, and I see the traffic on that road. There's two turnoffs going into the Apple Cross Development, and a lot of times, vehicles parked there, like landscapers, school buses parked there and stuff. In that community there, we'll, over 55, senior citizens, they like to go out for events and stuff like that. Are there going to be spaces that they could park their buses inside the facility versus being out on that road, which would be dangerous? I think that should be in the plan.
Yeah, and that detail can be worked through during conditional use, so I would encourage you-
To bring it up then?
To bring it up then.
Okay, that's why, that's why, that's why, stop me anytime you want.
No, that's good, good, good comment.
And then a lot of builders in New Jersey, new communities such as this, they, there's going to be a, what you call it, more, more demand on emergency equipment, ambulance, you know, like an ambulance, fire trucks, police. Does the builder make any contributions in those areas? The builders in New Jersey and the communities I lived in or nearby that did this, they made contributions. Like a fire truck was donated, so, something to think about when you're dealing with new communities like this.
Good idea.
Just a suggestion. Drainage. We had a moratorium recently over in the Apple Cross Development for drainage problems, and it's been lifted temporarily, but any permits for patios, new decks, whatever, would be scrutinized. For a while, you couldn't build anything, but everything's being watched very closely. So, there's general drainage issues in there. So, what would be done different over there to prevent the same type of problems?
So, I guess that's, that's a very valid point, because I'm, as a contractor, dealing with that right now. The Apple Cross community, from my understanding, the stormwater management was accounted for by the builder for what the builder's needs were, not for what the homeowner's needs would be after the builder sold the houses to them. So, therefore, now you have MPDS permits that are required and things of that nature. So, I have a feeling that we're going to look a lot-
More closely at this one? Okay, good, all right. So, you learn from, we'll learn from previous, Miss-
And the MPDS, by the way, has only been, Scott, how long?
Not the MPDS, it's their stormwater.
Stormwater, I'm sorry.
NPDS, the MPDS permit process is more involved now than it was when Apple Cross-
Apple Cross, okay. All right.
But what you're, what you're asking about, I think you may have heard Ms. Dunn refer to a fully engineered plan. That will come up when they do a fully engineered plan.
Right. So, we've learned some things over in Apple Cross, and I'm sure it's going to help on those plans.
Come back for the conditional use, I think, is the answer to the question.
Yeah, so I'm sure, okay. Let me make sure those things are thought about. Our utilities, I mean, power, the power grid, we all know that we face a lot of outages, a lot of brownouts, whatever. Is there going to be a need for a new subplant? We know that. Because right now, we all know, when there's a storm or anything, we have-
That's definitely a PICO question, I think. I don't think that we would, we would have any jurisdiction over that.
And then, where would the substation go? Right? And we all know those aren't pretty, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And one other thing is communications. When you build a big community like that, you have more users on cell phones, mobile, nobody wants a cell tower in their backyard. So, there should probably be a communication study to see whether or not the area is already satur, totally saturated, you know, as far as signals are concerned, because I think it is, because a lot of us in the community over there, certain parts of the house, you don't get, you don't get signals. So, I'm wondering if a communication state study-
I think, where are we with that one, Scott, on 282?
282, they have not come back to me with any proposals, and I've contacted them since their initial contact with me.
So, there was a cellphone tower planned off of 282 by one of the bigger-name companies.
So, that was, so it's, they're still, it's considered good enough, the coverage, the coverage?
It's only a mile from this property, so.
Right. All right, because the reason why I mention is, when you, when you build a community, instead of building a tower, there are things you can add to boost the signals within it, you know, the flagpoles, you can actually have benches and stuff like that that will, you know, transmit there or boost the signals. So, there's things you can do, and it looks nice, you wouldn't even know it was there. Something to think about ahead of time, just some thoughts. Well, those are just some basic things to think about. The most important thing is that safety along that road there. There needs to be an area where, we'll bring it up in a future meeting then, I guess, right? But, great, it's a great idea, I love it.
Thank you. Any, any other public comment? Oh, this is for this, do you have it for this?
For this hearing on the ordinance? This is a hearing on this particular ordinance right now?
Yes, sir. That kind of throws you off because I do all-
Hi, I'm Greg McDermott, I'm at, live at 220 East Reeseville Road. And timing is one of the first questions. I heard agreement of sale and a time, zoning and some other things had to be done. So, when is the agreement of sale, got a deadline?
Well, I don't know, I don't think the township is privy to all of the terms of the agreement of sale. We were told when we were considering making further amendments to this ordinance that would have not allowed the hearing to occur tonight. They have deadlines within their agreement of sale with the school district that they had to meet, and one of them was that there had to be a final zoning approval issued by the end of July, I believe it was. If this hearing didn't go on tonight, there's a 30-day appeal period, so they were concerned they wouldn't meet that deadline. But we don't, the township is not privy to the rest of the terms of the agreement of sale. That's something that is a school district document, and as being a public body, you may be-
Should we have a feel, though, for an ETA and when actually ground will be broken if everything goes?
I may know that.
I'm sorry, when ground would be broken?
Yeah, I mean, is this like a year, two years, start? Six months? I'm just trying to get a-
Definitely not six months. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of processes yet to, to be had if this rezoning goes through. As Ms. Camp just says, there's an appeal period, then we would do engineered plans, we would do a traffic impact study, and then we would have to go through conditional use hearings, and then we would have to go through subdivision and land development.
All right. And one final question. One of my neighbors, and I love this community, I'm new to it, only been here seven years, really is a great feel, first time in my life, in my 60s, that I actually feel part of a community. Never would have done this earlier, so I'd really thank all of you. But the Forbes, if I understand the letter, I think they have said that their zoning, they could only sell because they're in the perimeter? They could only sell to a 55-plus? Is that right or no?
No, it's just an overlay.
That's not correct?
I missed what you said.
Okay.
I misunderstood. Who was, who was the Ford?
The Ford's lived, the Ford's lived next to Ames.
I thought you said Forbes.
We just want to chat.
No, no, absolutely, trust me, and-
So, just so you understand, what's being proposed here, we're not changing the underlying zoning on any of these properties.
Okay.
This is an additional, like an option that's being created. So, the existing zoning stays in place, you create an option, and whoever owns the property has the choice of proceeding on the existing zoning or the option.
Just as kind of a background, I could care less about my neighbors in all the homes I've lived at before. If any of these people are harmed, they're like family to me, and I just, I just am really serious about trying to make sure they're protected as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
If the list will pass that on to your former neighbors.
One last thing, I mean, I think it's very important that people understand that, you know, everybody, a lot of people are probably here for this exact reason tonight, but don't lose track of this, that this is going to be an ongoing process, and there will be other hearings coming on, and it's very important to get here for those, because we're going through one right now where it's almost at the deadline and everybody came out of the woodwork. So, it's important to stay with this through the, through the whole process.
Good evening, Paul Doyle, 210 East Reeseville Road, so, Max still likes me. One of the things I'm concerned about when we think about what's going on here is the protection for the current homeowners for all the unforeseeables, things like, most of these houses are still on wells. You start moving this much dirt, the wells become at risk. If the well is lost, the house becomes uninhabitable, unsellable, and for a lot of our neighbors, this is, this is not acceptable. I mean, we can't do this as a community. What kind of protections are going in place so they don't end up in extended litigation to recover any kind of damage for something like that? What studies have been done to protect the local farms? There is somewhere between 8 and 18 deer that forage on that property regularly. If you develop it, or if we develop it, they go somewhere else. That affects every farm, the Apple Cross Golf Course, all the properties around here. And, you know, what kind of other pest management things are going to be put into place as part of the development? Because I know when the last house went into Apple Cross in the section behind me, I had not had, there had not been any document of my, my house in years, and I had eight in my kitchen in a week. And I had to pay for the pest control, and it was simply because as they built Apple Apple Cross, they flushed them out and moved them around the property until they finally got to that last lot, and then the next lot over became mine. And it wasn't just me, several residents of Apple Cross had the same issue that were living along that same street. And so, when you include the mice, the deer, the possums, everything else, this is a pest management thing that becomes a burden to the existing homeowners. And yet, we reap no benefit from it. In fact, from the township newsletter, we actually pay a premium because most new developments don't pay back what they actually cost to the communities, and that's directly from the mile marker. So, these are all things that we want to, you know, make sure are considered, not to mention the fact that, you know, the road slopes down hill towards Bonsville Road and many businesses, Heritage Metal, Jason's Building, a lot of homeowners along that path of Beaver Creek as well, including our firehouse. You know, if that water management isn't handled exactly right, we as a community are in a lot of trouble, and a lot of community members are in a lot of trouble. So, before we go forwards with this as part of the planning stage, I think we need to make sure that we get all of these protections in place to make sure that the burden doesn't fall on the existing homeowners because, you know, we're paying the burden already, and we're okay with that. You know, we want to welcome developers into our community. It's a great community, we're ranked really highly in the state, I'd like to keep it that way. But if we start losing local businesses, we start losing our firehouse, we start having problems with pests everywhere because of the development, you know, we lose that ranking, people become very disgruntled.
Yeah, I can tell you, there are many practices that we, you know, we have a great open space program where we try to buy as much as we can possibly get our hands on, but the one thing to keep in mind is, a farmer has the right to sell his land, and provided it meets certain guidelines, the township can't step in and say, it's good for one house if it was, you know. So, we, you know, there's many more issues. We have a traffic problem as well, the same thing.
And I'm not objecting to the sale. I'm not staying up, I'm saying, but, you know, we as existing homeowners inherit the problems that come from developing the property. That's just the nature of the beast. But we as homeowners shouldn't have to pay the burden, we don't make any profit off that. You know, and it shouldn't cost a lot of our neighbors who are on fixed incomes as well, because a lot of times they have trouble paying their bills as it is, getting their houses fixed up and so on. And so, it shouldn't fall on them to take care of these additional problems that are created by somebody else.
I think a lot of the things that you raised are the specific details that get vetted through both the conditional use and the land development process. The township has ordinances in place that the applicant will have to demonstrate compliance with, and the township has professional consultants that will review the details of their planning, the stormwater management designs, the traffic stuff. So, all that, it's really not, as Ms. Dunn said, the cost to repair all that from the applicant's perspective. They don't do that until they know that they have the property zoned the way they need to go forward. So, I don't think that your comments are well taken. I think they're very well taken, but I think in terms of answering and making sure that there's protections in place to make sure that existing residences and existing properties are not damaged, that really comes at a later stage of the process.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go, no, he was talking to John over there. Seeing none, we're going to go back, we're going to close this hearing, go back on the record.
Your regular meeting.
For our regular meeting, which, sorry, I've got a million papers here in front of me. And before we go in, we're going to go into the regular hearing, I want to let everybody know that the board did meet prior to tonight's meeting, an executive session. And we're going to start out with our public comment for non-agenda items. Rules for conduct of public meetings are established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of this meeting. First, we do have Mr. Tony Scalise, who is on the agenda for public of non-agenda items.
Well, we can, down under ordinance says if you want to do the vote on the.
So, we're going to get them out of here, or are we going to have them?
I'll let him go now, you have him up there. I would let him go now, you have him up there. If you want to go back and do a vote on the ordinance, you can do that.
Okay.
All right. My name's Tony Scalise, 100 Hope Bowl Road and 1199 Horseshoe Pike. Chairman Scrivner and the Board of Supervisors, I apologize for requesting valuable time at a meeting for an issue that, in my opinion, could have been resolved another way, but I have the following, I have followed the procedures that have been suggested to me, and I've been unable to get the answers I feel the public is entitled to by going through the proper channels with the staff. At the suggestion of Mr. Revan, Township Assistant Manager, I would like to address an issue regarding the use of township fuel that I brought to your attention at the April 19th board meeting. Unfortunately, Supervisor Fisher was not in attendance at that meeting. Therefore, for a complete overview of the situation, I'd like to, as quickly as possible, discuss a timeline of events and where the taxpayers currently stand in this debate. In April, an undated photograph surfaced of the township manager pumping township fuel into his own personal vehicle. At the meeting on April 19th, I asked the supervisors a series of questions regarding the situation. The questions ranged from the township manager's contract and if other employees might have had access to the fuel. Solicitor Camp stated at the meeting that she was new and that she was not involved in Mr. Pierceall's contract. She did state, though, that while Mr. Pierceall is not currently working under an executed contract, he is working under the terms of his old contract that was dated October 21st, 2015. Supervisor Scrivner, you've stated that you and Mr. Winters were not completely aware of the details of Mr. Pierceall's contract since it was assigned before each of you had been elected. Just for the record, it had been signed by Supervisor Fisher and former supervisors Kringle and Volt. I have a copy of his contract, if you'd like, I can drop it off up front to you. I'd like to call to your attention part of the contract which clearly states, "The employee shall be responsible for paying for all liability, property damage, and comprehensive insurance for such vehicle, and shall further be responsible for all expenses attendant to the purchase, operation, maintenance, repair, and regular replacement of said vehicle." So, in lieu of a $400 a month statement, the rules were clear as to what the employee was supposed to do. At the April meeting, I asked if any other township employees had access to the fuel other than Mr. Pierceall. Mr. Van Leeu stated that the roads department staff, the police force, and the fire department had access to the fuel. When I asked if it was possible for any staff members to have pumped township-owned fuel into their personal vehicles, Chief Kosse stated that he would find it hard to believe that any staff member that had access to the fuel would be utilizing township-owned fuel in their vehicles since the area was completely under video surveillance. Mr. Winters, Mr. Winters stated that he and the board would look into the situation and get back to me and the residents. Chief Kosse stated that Mr. Van Leeu had access to the data and that he receives a report every month from Mr. Van Leeu. Mr. Winters stated that he would contact Mr. Van Leeu for the data. On April 24th, I submitted a write-to-know request with Mr. Revan, and I asked, and I'll quote, "I would like a list of all township employees that have had, that have or had a PIN number assigned to them for the fuel pump since January 1st of 2015. In addition, I would like a report of each time the pump was used, the employees whose code was entered, and the amount of fuel dispensed." I have a copy of that letter if you'd like. Please note, I did not ask for any employee PIN numbers, I simply asked for which employees had a PIN number and pumped fuel, how much, and on what date. On April 26th, I received a letter from, an email from Mary Slade, that the township would need more time to honor my request. On May 31st, I received a letter via email from Mr. Revan at 5:29 PM. In this letter, Mr. Revan reiterated my request, and I quote, "A list of township employees that have or had a code and a report of each time the pump was used, and the employees whose code was entered and the amount of fuel used." Once again, I note, I never asked for an employee PIN number. Mr. Revan wrote that part of my request was denied because it exempt, it is exempt under the PA Right to Know Law, Section 708B4. He stated my request is exempt because, and I quote, "A record regarding computer hardware, software, and networks, including administrative or technical records, which, if disclosed, would be reasonably likely to jeopardize computer security. I didn't believe I asked for anything about computer security, I asked who pumped fuel into whose car." In addition, it goes on to say, and I quote, "Specifically, the responsive records contain PIN numbers and other data utilized by the authorized users to access township property. The portions of the responsive records containing this data have been redacted." I have a copy of the fuel report here, I'm sure you guys have a copy of it. It's 83 pages. It became very obvious instantly that there was no way for me to identify which employee had used township-owned fuel. While there are vehicle numbers listed on the report, there was no data to describe which vehicle matched which vehicle number. There are no employee names on the report. On May 31st, I emailed Mr. Revan and asked him if it was possible to set up a meeting. On June 8th, I met with Mr. Revan briefly to discuss the fuel report he sent me on May 31st. I asked Mr. Revan to explain the report to me and show me where I could tell which employees pumped each transaction. I also asked, where was the report showing which employees had access to the fuel pumps? Mr. Revan stated that his letter was clear and that the PIN numbers could not be disclosed, nor could the list of which employees had access also either be disclosed. He suggested if I did not like his response, I could appeal the decision with the State of Pennsylvania and discuss it with the Board of Supervisors. This is why I've asked for your time this evening. On June 8th, at 2:35 PM, I sent an email to all three supervisors regarding my displeasure with Mr. Revan's response. On June 8th, I received an email back from Supervisor Winters that he would consider the situation. Unfortunately, I have yet to hear from Supervisor Scrivner or Supervisor Fisher. On June 12th, I emailed Mr. Revan, and I quote, "Mr. Revan, other than you, who authorized the township's response in the fuel report? Were any other township employees, supervisors, or attorneys involved in the decision to respond in this matter? If so, who were they?" Mr. Revan replied, and I quote, "I am authorized to respond to write-to-know requests per the Board of Supervisors Resolution 10 of 2015. I further feel that I responded to your request appropriately, then took the additional step of meeting with you in person last week to discuss your requests and the responsive records, I have no further comment on this matter." Therefore, on June 13th, I submit an appeal to the State of Pennsylvania Office of Open Records regarding the right-to-know request partial denial. Also, on June 13th, I submitted four new write-to-know requests with the township. I submitted a write-to-know request for a copy of all fuel invoices for fuel deliveries and purchases made by the township between 12/1 of 14 and 4/24 of 18. I also submitted a write-to-know request for a copy of the township's employee handbook and the policy and procedure manual for non-uniformed employees. I also submitted a write-to-know request asking for which vehicle number on the fuel report dated May 31st corresponded to which township vehicle. In addition, I submitted a write-to-know request for Mr. Van Leeu's signed expense reports and all copies of all invoices for any reimbursements made to Mr. Van Leeu. On June 14th, I received an email from the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, and they stated I would have a final determination by August 13th of 2018. June 20th, yesterday, 8:45 PM, I received three emails from Mr. Revan regarding three of my write-to-know requests dated June 13th. I received a copy of the employee manual and was informed by Mr. Revan that the township does not have a policy or procedure manual for non-uniformed employees. I also received a copy of all the fuel deliveries for the timeframe requested. I will need time to compare all the gallons delivered to the township versus all the gallons on the fuel report that were dispensed, so I can do the debits and credits and see if all gallons are accounted for. I am not a forensic accountant, but this math I can do. I received a list of some of the vehicles owned or operated by the township, but not a complete list. However, Mr. Revan did not answer the question accurately or completely. Specifically, I asked for which vehicle number on the fuel usage report from May 31st, so there's already a number on the fuel usage report as to what vehicle. I asked for which vehicle represented which vehicle in the fleet of the township. I was denied. I will appeal this denial with the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records as well. As an aside, on the township website, there's a document that's called "Operation and Maintenance Program for Municipal Vehicles: Operation, Maintenance, Fueling, and Washing Activities, Revised January 2010 and June of 2012." I'm sure you guys know it. In the document, it states, and I quote, "The facility is to be used by the road department, police department, East Brandywine Fire Company, no other public use is permitted." Those are the facts. I have a series of questions, you can answer them as we go, or however you would like to do it. Chairman Scrivner, do you believe the taxpayers are entitled to know how their tax dollars are spent?
First of all, let me just, I want to get something on record. You and I, and I want everybody to understand, I hold nothing back from anybody. We had a discussion at your pharmacy, so I don't want you to feel as though I'm sidestepping you. I did stop by, we talked for a little while. One thing that I will say is, with regards to policies and procedures with write-to-know, if there is, and I could be wrong on this, I think I understand this correctly, but if there is no written document for a write-to-know request, by state protocol, we don't have to write one to suffice a, create one to satisfy a write-to-know request. That is something that we can, am I right on?
Right. So, when you submit a write-to-know, what you're asking for is, provide me the public record. The write-to-know provides access to public records, which is a defined term. So, when you submit a write-to-know request, and you're asking for a public record, what Luke's job is, is to determine, is there a public record in the township's possession that satisfies that request? And that's what Mr. Raven did.
I understand.
And our office was involved in it. What Kyle was saying is that the law doesn't say that if the list doesn't exist, or the record that you're seeking doesn't exist, the township doesn't have to stop and create it.
I understand.
So, okay.
Yep, I got it.
So, I just wanted to.
We get, that's like question 16 or 17, we're going to get there.
Yep. So, now, again.
So, let's just stick to that question.
All right, but I want to cut you off one more time.
Sure.
Only because there's other members that we just dealt with this in our audience that we do have to stick to a timeline. You've gone now for about eight, nine minutes, and I did cut somebody off before, so I don't want to show favoritism here. But what I can ask you is, can you limit it to the three or four most important ones? You just said you had 16.
Or could we meet? I mean, we are willing to sit and meet with you and.
Well, I think it should be done in a public setting, not a meeting.
We can definitely.
That's why I asked to be put on the agenda.
We can definitely.
Six weeks ago.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I just cut somebody else off last week, and I do not want to start showing favoritism because that's not what I'm about. And trust me, it doesn't mean your issue is not important, but can we limit it today to three?
Sure.
And in the meantime, like Ms. Camp just said, if you would like to sit down with herself and one of the three, we could certainly go over some of the ones that aren't just as important, but maybe not for tonight, you want to bring them up from the next one.
Mr. Scalise, the other thing that we could do, because I understand you want it to be public, if you wanted to provide the questions, we can provide an answer, and you can make that answer public. Happy to do that.
Okay, I have copies of the questions, we can do that. I do have a couple of questions that I would like answered. And I'll stick with the question number one still, Chairman Scrivner, do you personally believe that taxpayers are entitled to know how their tax dollars are spent?
I wholeheartedly, absolutely believe that.
Okay. Forgive my ignorance, because I don't really know much about this stuff, and I don't know anything about second-class township code. But is there a chain of commands spelled out that townships are suggested to follow in that code? Specifically, I'm asking a very simple question. Does the Board of Supervisors work for the township manager, or does the manager work for the board?
The Board of Supervisors are the executive body running the township who've appointed a manager to see to the day-to-day operations for them.
Okay. I'd like to ask the board directly this question, it's a simple question. Has any member of the board directly asked Mr. Van Leeu, or Mr. Pierceall, or any other employees if they have ever used township-owned fuel in their personal vehicles?
That's a township, I'm trying to think of the best way to word this. It's a township issue that has been brought up, and I can assure you, it's being looked into.
Okay, the last one is very similar. Have any members of the current board at any time authorized Mr. Pierceall, Mr. Van Leeu, or any other employees to utilize township fuel in their personal vehicles? In other words, have you given them permission to do this?
Me personally, no, I have not. No.
I believe that there was a policy under the previous boards that did allow use, it it wasn't for personal use, but for township business in a personal vehicle to be fueled, yes.
Right. So in the contract, Mr. Pierceall's contract, it defines, as part of his reimbursement of $400 a month for a vehicle of his choice, that it defines the local area as within a 50-mile radius of East Brandywine. So assuming then anything over 50 miles, he would be either compensated for or be able to submit a reimbursement form. That's the way that the contract reads. So if he's doing local business within 50 miles of here, there shouldn't be any more compensation in it other than the $400 statement.
That's your interpretation.
Okay.
Just one more, Mr. Schleese, please.
Sure. These questions are for Mr. Winters. It's going to be a long question. I apologize. Have you had a chance to review the fuel reports for yourself? Have you asked Mr. Revan or Mr. Van Leeu to assist you in your role as a supervisor regarding this matter? And have you had the full and transparent professional assistance of Mr. Van Leeu, Mr. Pierceall, and Mr. Revan regarding this matter?
Yes, I did have a chance to look into this matter for you, and unfortunately, the documents have been password-protected, and I've been having difficulty...
Who controls that? Chief? Is that your department, or is that Matt's department?
Oh, you don't have that.
Matt, do you control the database for the fuel?
Well, this is a Board of Supervisors meeting, so...
Okay. Can you ask Mr. Van Leeu if he has access to the database for the fuel?
I did.
Okay, and what was his response?
He was unwilling to provide me with my request.
Okay, I'm all finished here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schleese. Any other public comment for non-agenda items?
Can I make a, can I ask a question about an agenda item? I'm sorry, I wasn't able swift enough to get up before Mr. Schleese. Does the board intend to vote tonight on whether or not to adopt the overlay district ordinance?
I think I was under the impression that we were...
You can do that as part of the ordinance in the resolution, or you can do it...
Normally, we would have done it right at the end of the hearing, so that's what she's questioning.
Yeah, yeah. So you mean you want to leave? Is that what you're asking?
I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings.
So do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll go back to the public comment for non-agenda items. Although I think you should stay.
Matt Kanapeski, 425 Creek Road. I would like to thank Mr. Pierceall for reaching out to me and asking to put together a list of some of my concerns, and I put together a short list, because I don't really know everything. So I was wondering if I could approach the board and submit that for record?
Now, I don't know if we're going to have the answers for these today, only because we're just getting it now, but...
I wasn't expecting any answers, but coincidentally, I noticed that Mr. Tulio of Metropolitan happens to be present. So I was wondering if he wanted to come up, and we could discuss some of the topics over my last four meetings here.
Well, I don't think that's appropriate for tonight, but let me...
Why isn't it appropriate?
Well, we haven't even seen the questions yet. Let me, let me...
Would you like to speak?
No, it's not, it's not...
This is public comment, though. All right, Mr. Kanapeski, this is for you tonight. So for your public comment, was it this just only, or did you want to talk about something else first?
You guys want to check out the questions and see if you have any answers?
Well, if you can, I mean, we've got an audience. Wait, let me just, if you had something for public comment you want to talk about, I mean, we'll certainly read this. Don't get me wrong, but I can't, I don't want to hold it...
No, I'm appreciative. Like I said, Mr. Pierceall sent me an email, asked me to put together some questions of my concerns, and Ms. Camp, I understand she's very helpful in these situations and defends many different townships and many different developers, and I really just came, to my understanding, me speaking doesn't actually apply to the record. So I was informed that I have to actually present questions to actually be submitted to the record. But I wasn't expecting any of this, and like I said, Mr. Tulio is right here. So instead of repeatedly wasting the entire board's time and resources and everything, he is in control of Metropolitan Development. I don't think it's out of line or unprofessional to ask somebody to discuss the development that's being developed.
I'll be honest, to be, you know, if he wants to, he's more than welcome to, but I'm not going to put him on record as having to. It's up to you.
I came to speak my own. I'm not even engaged.
Okay.
I don't have to engage. If he wants to do it, I'll engage all he wants.
Okay, so there's your answer for that.
I came to clear the record. I have some stuff I'm going to put on the, I've been waiting an hour.
Are you doing public comment for non-agenda as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Kanapeski, we'll start with you. We'll do yours. I have to respect, it's the same if somebody wanted to talk to you, didn't want to speak to them, I would have to shut it down.
Okay.
But feel free, do your, if this is it for you tonight, you just want us to read it, I can promise you, we can read this.
Oh, no, I think that was said a lot right there, so I'm pretty comfortable with...
Mr. Kanapeski, can I reach out to you to understand, are you asking for copies of these documents?
For the site inspections that are required by the EPA, and they're required to stay at the developer's office during the entire process.
So you want copies of the documents you've listed here? That's, I just want to be clear.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because, trust me, this will be a lot more helpful, so we get to the crux of the case.
Cool. Thank you.
We'll treat this as a right-to-know request, and we'll respond to it, but these documents should be in the town to file, and if I could get your phone number, if I email you, that we'll be able to get you the documents?
I can give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Hud, I think let's just clear the, separate the conversation for a minute and...
My name is Hud Volz. I'm a former Board of Supervisors member here for 24 years. I'm very familiar with Mr. Pierceall. I hired him. When he was hired, he was part of a small governmental entity. We had a secretary, a building inspector, and Mr. Pierceall. So when he became an administrator, his role was to do just about everything that anybody else couldn't do, and that included some building inspections. He was the emergency management director. He was working for the fire company. He was a paramedic. He was using his vehicle a lot. When it came time to renew his contract and talk about compensation, the issue of his vehicle use came up. Looked to other townships, some townships, Euclid, West Whitman, they gave their employees vehicles. They paid for everything, soup to nuts. I'm not sure they did any accounting on either end, but, you know, there was insurance, tags, permits, gas, maintenance, repairs, the whole thing was probably over $1,000 a month. When Scott came to us and said, "Look, I need to do something. I'm wearing out my vehicle," we said, "Fine, we'll do something for you. We can either have you do a vehicle, or we can have you do mileage." And the mileage thing just didn't make sense. He wasn't using it entirely for the township. He was using it mostly for the township, but not entirely. The number that came in, we did some calculations, it was two-thirds, one-third, two-thirds business, township business, one-third personal. He wanted an SUV, because he wanted to haul his camper up to Penn State. How could I forget? And he's doing camping with his wife, and they had another personal car. All these things are important to the IRS, and I guess maybe to some people, but to us, it was, well, what do you need, and what do we need? And what we came to was a hybrid agreement. He could get a vehicle that he wanted, which was an SUV. I think he still drives it today. He needed something that would tow. We actually wanted that as well, because in emergency situations, you got to get in your car. Rain, snow, sleet, ice. He's driving a plow for the township at this point as well. So he came up with a hybrid agreement, which said, "We'll give you the car allowance. You can spend it on whatever you want. Everything else is on you, except fuel." Why? Because fuel offsets all these other maintenance, repairs, other items that he has going on that he has to pay for out of his pocket. Two-thirds of his vehicle is being used for township business, only one-third for personal, so the offset was the fuel. Use the fuel to offset all the repairs you're doing, the tires, the brakes, the water pumps, paying for the insurance. I mean, all these things should have been shared, two-thirds, one-third. So in essence, I think the township got a good deal. We're getting $1,000 or more worth of a vehicle, and we're only paying $400 for it plus fuel. So somebody could sit there and add up everything, and at the end of the day, that's probably what's going to have to happen. But from my perspective, and I think from Mr. Fisher's, his use of the township fuel was authorized. I don't think there's any question about that. Now, the fact that he's over there on the camera is, I think, proof of that. You know, he wouldn't go over there as a township manager and start pumping fuel and thinking it's illegal, and then have it, you know, broadcast all over the place. So I'm here to speak on his behalf. I think it's authorized, and I don't think there should be any fallout from it. There may be a change in policy, but as I read his old contract, as Mr. Schleese did, it doesn't mention fuel, and in my view, it was authorized. And if you want to change that, that's your prerogative.
I understand, but the only issue I have is, I wasn't obviously a board member back then, and I have a serious issue with him utilizing the township fuel, being reimbursed $400 that same month, and charging the township mileage for PSATs. I mean, it's, to me, it's like kind of triple dipping, so to speak, and I don't think that was your intent either. And that's where my issues are.
I think it was, for us, that's where you build it to 50 mile, which is more than 50 to get to Harrisburg, so that's where it was. That's why we did that.
But you had to subtract Harrisburg, 61, Hershey Lodge is 61.4 miles. You had to subtract 50 around the area, so you're subtracting 50 there, 50 back, because that's 100 miles automatically off. You know, you can't request reimbursement. You know, the whole point is mileage, you know, he's getting paid $400 for the wear and tear of his vehicle, and then you permitted him to use the township fuel for the gas for the operation. He shouldn't be charging mileage, period.
Well, this contract says it good. You can change it, obviously.
Scott? All right, well, we're not having a hearing right now, so let's, I appreciate your, I appreciate your candid...
Want to call me back at any point, Mr. Scribner, Mr. Fisher, or Mr. Winters?
Thank you.
I will come back and be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Again, let's, feel free, come on up. I'm sorry.
Move it.
What's that? No, no, Connie.
Lori Petrie Formica, 1394 Horseshoe Pike. I'm not even talking about the gasoline. I'm concerned with...
I'm sorry. I'm always the voice that has to interrupt. Could I please have you approach the lectern, so that the folks at home can hear you?
Pretty soon, we're going to have Dr. Phil walk around with a mic and...
Lori Petrie Formica, 1394 Horseshoe Pike. I'm concerned, I'm not even talking about the gasoline. My concern is, if a supervisor asks a question of an employee of the township, I think he gets an answer. We've elected the supervisors to represent us, and when it comes time that an employee won't answer that supervisor, I think something's pretty messed up.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, honestly, this situation, for the most part, has just been risen this week, and as everybody, I hope, knows, Board of Supervisors, we have full-time jobs, so we get one time, twice maybe, where we can sit down and all talk, and we have to do that in a public meeting, and if it's for personnel issues, in an executive session.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, again, this is so fresh, I ask everybody just to give us some time to kind of weed through everything.
As I ask it, I'm not concerned at all about the gas. I'm concerned, for any supervisor, they have the ability to ask a question of any employee, and I think they deserve an answer immediately. If that answer is on paper, why is there hesitation to give the information?
If it's confidential information...
Gasoline is confidential?
May I speak?
Certainly.
Or do you want to just...
That was a question.
Sometimes there is confidential information, and I'm certainly, as a supervisor, I don't think I'm entitled to confidential information that would lead, or information that would lead to other confidential information. So it's not always as clear-cut, and I don't think it's a blanket statement that we can ask for anything and we're entitled to anything.
But I can assure you, we are, it's out, we're looking, we're, we don't have these opportunities, as I said, this is the first time tonight in probably, you know, a month that we get to sit down, and again, we try not to air employee or any dirty laundry over the airwaves here. We want to try and digest it, know it, and then go away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for non-agenda items?
This fellow over here wants to say...
Oh, I'm sorry. One more, and then we'll go to you.
Listen, I've been patient, too. I came down for one thing.
I understand, but listen, we have agendas here, and this is for public comment. I've had five hands up over here. I'm trying to be as fair as possible. Yes, ma'am?
I'm standing for 231 East Resilv Road, but what did you just agree to with the lady that was there?
I'm not following.
Okay, the new developer, the lady that was there, and as that gentleman was walking back over there, she stood up here and she said, "Are you going to vote?" And you guys all said, "Oh, okay," and everything, but...
Just for the overlay.
Yes, for an ordinance, not for, not for plan design, not for development approval, not for...
Well, that was kind, I mean, it was like, there was chatter and everything, and then all of a sudden, it was like, what the heck happened up here?
She wanted us to close out the hearing with our motion to vote on the ordinance, so that she didn't have to sit through the meeting. She's an attorney getting paid high dollars, and I'm sure her client didn't want her to be sitting here to listen to our agenda items. So she was asking us to close it out for her, so that she could leave. That's all.
So she has, you approved the ordinance for what?
They had a public hearing on changing a zoning ordinance to rezone certain properties to have an overlay for age-qualified residential community. So we had a 30-minute hearing to explain that ordinance.
Right, which I was...
And when the hearing was closed, they could have immediately then taken a vote, and Mr. Scribner instead went to public comment. So she asked if they could go back and actually take the motion to adopt the ordinance. So the vote that was taken was to adopt the ordinance that had been worked on for probably about a year.
Okay.
I can, I can meet with you. I can meet with the folks, because I know all you guys.
Because I just don't want somebody to come and take my house away from me, that's all.
No, I do appreciate your sincerity. We're here. Anybody else for, I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle, we'll get you going.
Thank you.
Tulio. I'm sorry, was it Tulio?
Tulio.
I'm calling everybody.
Like the Tulio Metropolitan Development Group. Okay, I just came down to clear the air, based on the other person that spoke public comment. I'm not going to engage. There's a long history. I'm going to leave some stuff with the board. I'm not going to cooperate in any way, as far as any type of paperwork or anything that's requested from me. I don't need to see his letter. I'm not going to look at his letter, because you'll see copies of letters that were sent to him that go back years, that he hasn't responded to one letter. So how's it feel to want? That's number one. It's been nothing but an issue. I will print off all my text messages on my phone tomorrow and send them in to everyone, so you see the type of person that you're dealing with. Okay? And he threatens everybody, okay? And up until this point, I haven't fired back, but I am going to fire back. And I don't care what the consequence is, and I just want everyone to know, because as a township, you have certain zoning, the property's being used for other than residential zoning. So I, as a taxpayer in the township, I want it enforced. You're not allowed to use a residential property for commercial use, for storage, for equipment storage, employees depart there, anything. You're just not allowed to use it. That's why you have zoning. So here's some stuff. You guys can go through it. I will, I will send the other stuff in to Scott tomorrow, the text messages.
All right, so there's one copy of this?
Yeah, just one, okay?
So I'm going to hand this over to Kristen Camp, and then she can decide how she wants to give you it.
But I mean, every agency's been involved, the Fish Commission, DEP, the Conservation District, everyone gets called, just so you know, and gets threatened. He knows someone, going to lose their job, this, that, for a year and a half, it's been a nightmare. He had no problem cashing the check when he sold Deesman, okay? Tried to work it out. Tried to work it out, it cost me over $100,000 to go to court, okay? Because if I engage, our money's unlimited. So it's not like, you know, but I've tried to do the right thing, but I've gotten harassing texts, and when you read them, they're threatening texts, they're all on my phone, nothing but threats. He threatens my corporate lawyer, threatens everyone he gets involved with, the site contractor, there's three sides to every story. I will air my side in the court of law, nowhere else. I just want everyone to be clear, I don't want you guys to get in the middle of my dispute because I had to go to court, I had to get an injunction, I had to get an order, I had to go the long route for everything, okay? And I did it the proper way, got it done, got the order line in, okay? There's been no issues, there's been no violations from the Conservation District, from anybody, there's been nothing. It just, it just never ends, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll give it, we'll have the solicitor look at it on our end.
And I'll send the text messages tomorrow, because I want, like I said, there's three sides to every story.
I honestly don't think that it's for us to decide between the two parties, just being honest. Again, you guys have.
Well, that's why they made courts, and that's why I'm here to air it. I don't want you guys to get in the middle. If you want to get in the middle, that's your business, but.
We're going to handle what we can handle on our end, whether it's for your side or for Mr. Kanapeski's.
I'm not asking for any favors. There's nothing there, you can do whatever you want, but all I'm saying is, the court of law is where it'll get aired out, okay? Thank you.
Okay, so we have, anybody else for public comment for non-agenda items before, well...
He was already recognized.
Yeah, you were already recognized, Mr. Kanapeski. I will say, I will give you.
He was supposed to discuss it, and then he didn't want to discuss it, and then he just planned to be.
I know, but what I want to point out is the same thing I said to him, we can't, us up here, you know, everybody looks at us like we're the court, we can't, unfortunately. I can say you have your right to your opinion, as he does.
If I'm an East Brandywine citizen, and my taxes pay for this room, that guy is a felon and just walked out of prison.
Well, you know, again, I appreciate it, but we're not the court here to decide how, you know, it ultimately ends. But we have your points, and trust me when I tell you, now that we know exactly what they are, Kristen will go over them this week, and probably by next week, we'll have something. Anybody else for non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am?
I did a 2-2 when he's Reskill Road. I don't have any questions, but I do have, well, one is a question, it's referring to the 55 community. I just want to know why the first 55 community didn't get built. So that may not be answered now, but that's one of my questions. And the other one is a comment for, in any corporation, if anyone abuses their position, they would be fired, and also their retirement would be taken away in most situations that I've heard about, and I'm just making that comment in reference to the gas situation.
Thank you. Did you want to answer real quick to the 55? That was the K Havian. I wasn't here yet, but.
Oh, okay, sure.
I was.
All right.
And they did, we did go through the land development process with them, and I think it was approximately 2007, they just pulled out because the economy.
Wasn't because of the EPA, then?
No.
No, it was 2009, and the housing market had tanked.
Okay, because I had always thought that it was the EPA that didn't allow it, and I wondered how another developer would come in.
No.
No, that's not.
All right, well, I'm glad I asked it.
Thank you. Anybody else for non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'm going to quickly move on. So we're going to go to the minutes of previous meeting for the Board of Supervisors, June 7th, 2018. I make a motion that we approve the June 7th, 2018 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurers' report, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of June 21st, 2018 are as follows. General fund checking, $2,428,789.84. General fund investment, $754,483.74. Referendum open space, $2,296,966.15. Open space, $712,486.3. Traffic impact, $1,445,838.27. And there are a total of 134 invoices in need of approval to be paid.
Thank you. Let's take a moment and go over the expenditures. Okay, so one of the supervisors.